The motion carries. Item number 29 is a presentation on the city's drought contingency plan and ordinance amending city code of ordinances updating the city's drought contingency plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Drew Molly, Chief Operating Officer for Corpus Christi Water. I'm joined here today with Esteban Ramos, who is our Water Resource Manager. We're going to co-present some information here on the drought contingency plan. So the purpose of today's presentation is to provide an overview of the new drought contingency, the proposed new drought contingency plan. Other than the changes to the structure of the surcharges and reducing some of the restrictions in Stage Three, the new proposed drought contingency plan rules are very similar to the rules in the existing and current drought contingency plan. Before we dive into this presentation, I would like to acknowledge that we did not get here today by ourselves. We utilized some outside consultants that included Corolla engineers to help ensure that this document meets the best practices of drought contingency planning. Corolla also helped us finalize the drought contingency plan and also continues to perform some modeling for us of future water supply conditions. We also relied on Nugent, who is currently contracted to develop our rate model. Nugent assisted us with modifying the proposed surcharges so that they are easy to explain, easy to understand, and most importantly, they're easy to implement through our billing department if surcharges were to be applied in the future. We did spend a lot of time meeting with our community members to listen to and implement changes to this plan based on their input while ensuring these proposed changes were in accordance with best drought contingency planning practices across the country. We have spoken to pool associations, landscape and nurseries. We've engaged with car washers and mobile detailers as well as meeting with other community stakeholders. And while we may not have been able to personally meet with every group, we are certainly happy to meet with any stakeholders at any time, but especially now between now and February 11th. For example, we did get a call from the Coastal Bend Home Builders Association. They were here today. I reached out to them last night, had a conversation with them. We have presented some of this information to that group through the Development Services Department, but you know, clearly, we want to try to get in front of that board between now and February 11th. And so we tentatively have a meeting set up with them on February 4th. And we anticipate other meetings, that there may be some other meetings that folks want to have, and we're happy to do that. We've also, I like to say, we've leaned on experts in the field from other cities who we have close connections with, like, so for example, the city of Austin, San Antonio. Karen Guz, for example, is the Director of Conservation for the City of San Antonio. She's also the Chairwoman of the Water Conservation Advisory Council, which is appointed by the state legislature. So we've, you know, engaged with her, we've given her a plan, she's peer reviewed it. We think that's important to have some of our peers in the industry look at these plans. We also, City of Austin is another city that we work with a lot. There's a gentleman named Kevin Klugey. He's their Water Conservation Manager. Austin has a water system that is actually a lot more similar to ours in San Antonio. Austin has one supply. It is 100% based on surface water from the Colorado River. San Antonio, on the other hand, has like 12 different sources of water, and many of those are drought-proofed. So we kind of want to look at Austin perhaps as a little bit better of a model. And again, we're not, we're not, you know, taking everything verbatim out of any one particular plan, but I think it's important to put a plan in for, in front of our community that best represents the ability to reduce non-essential watering, and it's in spirit with others, some of the other cities that have good plans. So this presentation will provide an overview of the current water status and our short-term water supply projects. We will briefly talk about the history of the drought contingency plan, the purpose of it, the updates and changes that we're proposing to make, as well as some of the public engagement that we've had and some recommendations going forward. If there's one important thing to take away from this presentation, it is that this plan is required by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, or TCEQ, specifically Chapter 288, Subchapter B of the Texas Administrative Code. And it is our business plan. This is a business plan that we use to manage drought and to also manage other, hopefully it never happens, but emergencies, water emergencies. So while the purpose of this presentation is certainly to talk about the drought contingency plan, what I would like to do is I'd like to give you a quick overview of the current water supply levels and a quick summary of some of the shorter-term water projects that we're working on. I want to emphasize that our team behind the scenes is working day and night. We're working six, seven days a week to do all of these projects that you see on here, not to mention the fact that we're running the business of water and wastewater. As noted here on this slide, you can see on the very top, Choke Canyon Reservoir is currently sitting at 16.5% today. The all-time low of Choke Canyon was 16.7% back in 2015. Lake Corpus Christi today is at 24.8%. It was recorded at its all-time low at 12.9% in March of 2013. And then finally, the combined reservoir is at 18.8%. That's of course, the cumulative addition of Choke Canyon and Lake Corpus Christi. We are at a historic place in time because the lowest that has ever been, the combined reservoir, was at 25.5% back in August of 96. Let's talk a little bit about some of the projects that we've been working on for many, many months. So the Mary Rhodes Pipeline Project, it continues to advance with good expediency. To summarize this for some who may not be aware, the MRP project was, had a condition assessment done last year. Condition assessments are things that are important to do so we can understand the health of the, of the asset that we're looking at. The pipeline is approximately 25 years old, or roughly it's at about half of its expected useful life. 50 years is typically what you see. If you take good care of these types of assets, you can extend the life further on. The assessment showed that the pipeline was in very good shape, and the analysis that we did at the time supported increasing the flow of the line without any additional risk of failure to the pipeline. As a result of that risk assessment, which was expedited and was completed in June of last year, we decided to increase the pipeline flow of, from 42 million gallons a day, which for years, that, that had been where we operated that pipeline at. That was considered to be a maximum safe and reliable flow, and so that was the flow that had been, been run for many years. Now, now that we had that assessment, now that we've looked at the risks associated with running the pipeline at different flow rates, we made the conscientious decision to increase that pipeline flow to 55 million gallons a day. We did that on June 25th of last year. So we are pumping now the pipeline from what was Schedule Two. You might hear that in, you might hear that from time to time. Schedule Two is, was approximately 42 million gallons a day. We're operating at Schedule Three, which is about 55 million gallons a day. And since we've, since we've made that conscientious decision to do that, we have been able to bring an additional 2 billion gallons of water down the Mary Rhodes Pipeline that otherwise would not have been brought down, and that is from our supplies that we've already paid for. We've paid for water in Lake Texana, we've paid for water, or we own the water rights in the Colorado River. We continue to expedite the project that we're doing right now. There's several projects actually that we're working on to, to increase the flow. So our ultimate goal, as you can see on this slide, is to expand that flow from 55 million gallons a day to about 75 million gallons a day, and we're hoping to do that by mid-March. There's a lot of activities that are going on. We're working, you know, pretty hard to make that happen. So we've got some specialty contractors that are out there working. We've explained to them the, the sense of urgency, and we're seeing, we're seeing good results as a result of that. So we will continue to, to work hard to make sure that that, that date is set for mid-March. The next project that we have on the list is a project called CC Polymers. We continue to work with the leadership team at CC Polymer. So they came to us back in the fall, and they asked us if we were interested in potentially looking at that facility as a, as a water supply option. We have since been in discussions with them. We've brought onboard a consulting firm to help us do the analysis to determine whether or not this makes, makes sense from a viability standpoint. We think it does because frankly, they could essentially get that plant operational in eight to 10 months, once we gave them, you know, a signed contract, if you will. And that's a 9.4 million gallon per day plant. It's right on the other side of the Ship Channel, and so we're going to continue to work that option as we move forward. The next project I want to point to is the Oasis River Wells, Oasis River Groundwater Wells, I should say. As you can see on this slide, we do have some, some old wells. We call it, we call them rehabilitated wells. So these are old existing wells that were used. They were drilled, some of them were drilled back in the 50s and 60s, and they were used for decades as wells that augmented water supply for the city and the region. And these wells have been since decommissioned many, many, many years ago. They're not necessarily in the best of shape, but they're still there. And so we have teams out there today and have been working around the clock to look at these wells and see if we can't make them work for us. They're not going to be wells, they're not like new wells. They're not, they're not going to be able to produce 2 million gallons a day, but they're wells that nonetheless would contribute positively to our, our water, our short-term water need. We're using hydrogeologists to evaluate the aquifers so that we only withdraw an appropriate amount of water that does not adversely impact the local community. We want to be sensitive to the local community who only source of water for some of these folks that live along in that area that are outside the city is their own personal wells that they have, that they need for domestic use, for livestock and other things. We're also actively working through some regulatory processes to make this happen. So of course, we got to work with TCEQ. We have to work with the groundwater conservation districts. So those are all things that are taking place. We, we may very well, if we're successful, be able to have some water from these wells available by mid-March, and we're hoping that we might be able to get up to 5 to 6 million gallons of water from those sources. In addition, we, we also are looking at some new well property sites. We actually own some property. CCW owns property along the Oasis River, so those would make a lot of sense since we already own those properties. We've got a hydrogeological team that's helping us strategically look at the right locations where we'd want to drill these wells. I will say, one thing that I, I want to point out is that these wells are high in salt. So they're not, they're not necessarily, it's not necessarily water that's good for the long haul. It's, it's, and there's probably a reason why those wells were decommissioned. So this water is wet, that's what we need. It's relatively inexpensive because we're going to put that in the river, and we're going to let the river be the conveyance means by which that water will ultimately flow down to where the water's needed, which would be at the Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant. That treatment plant will take care of treating that water that goes into the river, just like it does every day with the existing water that's in the river. And so we think that this is a, you know, if you want to call it the lowest hanging fruit, and we're going to, we're going to pursue that to the extent that we feel like it's, it's a good option for us. The other project that I want to mention is, while it may not necessarily be a lot of water, as you can see on the list above, it is meaningful water. So when we talk about reclaimed water from the Oso Wastewater Treatment Plant, we're one of the few cities that looks at things differently, and it's a good thing. Wastewater reuse, wastewater from Oso, there's a filling station there today. I will tell you that we, the, the community hasn't necessarily embraced this water as much as you might expect. Part of the challenge is, is because it's considered Type II wastewater effluent, which is only really allowed to be used for commercial businesses. So I will tell you that today, the Parks Department is leading by example. They're using that water today. They're filling up trucks, they're taking that water over to landscaped areas, they're watering over 700 trees. We're actually doing a project right now in-house where we're expanding the ability to, to test for the effluent, to ensure that it, when it does meet, because it does typically meet Type I wastewater effluent characteristics. Type I wastewater is water that can be used for a much larger breadth and depth of use. So it can be used for residential purposes. So we're very close to having that filling station set up to where we can test it and make sure that we certify, when it is certifiable, that it's Type I. We can let the public come out and make it available to the public at a much larger scale where they can use it for irrigating, you know, houses, landscape, and, and using it for other things. So that, that is a project that, that we're working on in-house. We, we have not contracted anything out. We're essentially doing the design in-house, we're doing the, the concrete work in-house, we're doing the piping, the procurement of the tanks, the whole thing is being done in-house. So we're, we're, and our plan is to have this available in mid-February. So lastly, I think what's really important here, and this may take just a little bit of math, so bear with me, but one thing to point out is our demand yesterday, and granted, we're in the winter, but our demand yesterday was 73 million gallons a day. And generally, in the winter months, we're, we're anywhere between about 70 to 80, maybe 85 million gallons a day. So if you look at this table, I think what's important to note, that in summary, if we could bring down 75 million gallons a day of flow from the MRP, we're at 55 today, 75 in March. We add 10 to 15 million gallons a day of water from the Oasis River Groundwater Wells, it's not the best water, we know that, but it's a short-term stopgap. That, that's essentially a total of 85 to 90 million gallons a day. And that would essentially be able to allow us to meet at least most of our demands, all of our demands in the winter. What does this do? It buys us time. Time is, is what we need. We need to buy time. Some people will say that what this does is it allows our Choke Canyon and Lake Corpus Christi reservoirs to rest. Maybe sound a little corny, but that's what it is. It allows these reservoirs to rest and allow them to fill up, because they are going to fill back up. It's just a matter of time. We are going to get rain, and those reservoirs will fill back up. Next slide. Okay. So today, January 28th, we're presenting this plan to council. This is planned to be a two-read council action with today being the first read. Over the next two weeks, we have the ability to modify the plan if necessary, based on more input from the community. We want to get that. We expect continued dialogue to occur. That's a good thing, and this is all part of the process. On February 11th, our plan would be to take this back to you, to city council, and answer any outstanding questions that you may have, with the expectation that the plan would then be approved and adopted by city council as part of the second read. Assuming this approval happens on February 11th, the rules would go into effect. February 12th, we think these rules, some of these changes, as you heard in public comment today, are important for some of the businesses that are really feeling the pinch from some of this. The ordinance would require seven days prior to being implementable in terms of enforcing. So, which would mean that, like I said, enforcement violations, those kinds of things, it would take seven days. So February 17th would be the date that we could actually enforce the, the new DCP rules into taking effect. And I think, Councilman Scott, did you have a question, or?
Councilman Scott.
I was going to wait till you finished, I was just excited.
Okay, okay. All right.
It's so new to me, I don't know.
Okay, so, you know, to talk about our drought contingency plan, we, we got to talk a little bit about the water sources, where we get our water from. And one of the things that drives this criteria in terms of the drought contingency plan is, is of course, is our water sources. And it's important to remind our community that 100% of our water comes from rainfall. 100% of our drinking water comes from rainfall. Without rainfall in the right locations, we don't have enough drinking water to do the things that we take for granted or the things that we want to do. All of our resources, like I said, comes from lakes and rivers, which is a challenge, especially where we live. We live in a, in a climate that's hot, it's dry, and we're prone to drought. We met, we meet, I shouldn't say we met, but we, we met yesterday with the National Weather Service. We meet with them every week. We have a very close relationship with them because we're constantly looking at how things might change climatically. We actually met with the, the state meteorologist, John Nielsen-Gammons. I can tell you that the, the short-term forecast doesn't look very good. When we met with the National Weather Service yesterday, they told us that the tributaries that go into the Choke Canyon are the driest they've ever been, on record. So that, that is certainly is something that makes you think about the situation that we're in. The, John Nielsen-Gammons, Dr. Gammons said, you know, there's probably really no point in the meet until May, because he doesn't really see a whole lot of changes until May. Now, we know that January, February are the two driest seasons of the year for us, two driest months of the year. So rain starts to become more potentially available for us in March and April, and certainly May. So we're going to keep our fingers crossed that, that is indeed the truth, and that happens. They also, let's see here, they also confirmed, the National Weather Service also confirmed that, and we've been told this before, but how do you get out of this drought? It's going to take a significant rain impact event. It's going to take 20 inches, 20 inches of rain in, in a rain event to get out of all the drought that we're in. That would put us above the 50% level where we wouldn't have drought restrictions. So, you know, that's, that's a pretty significant event. Can it happen? Absolutely. So as shown on this slide, I want to talk a little bit about this slide. So on this slide, the western water supplies consist of the river, the reservoirs in the Oasis River Basin, which we all know is Choke Canyon and Lake Corpus Christi. The city owns or controls 100% of those impounded water rights on those reservoirs. I would like to say, in other words, the western supplies is really our workhorse. The Oasis River Basin is the city's most secured water supply, even though it is most prone to drought. The eastern supplies, as you can see on the bottom, and, and if you look, you can see, you know, the Oasis River on the, on the map. You can also see the, the eastern supplies, which is referred to as the L-N-R-A or La Vaca Navidad watershed, and then of course, the Colorado River. The eastern supplies, unlike the Oasis River, which we own or control 100% of, the, the Lake Texana is, is a contract water, so we don't own that. We have a contract with them. And then the Colorado River is water that we own the rights to, but it is junior rights, and it's run-of-the-river rights. So if the L-CRA, Lower Colorado River Authority, which they have done, says there's not enough usable water, run-of-the-river water in the water near Bay City where we take the water, we could be curtailed or eliminated from that water supply. The eastern water supplies, just so everybody knows, I think it's fairly obvious, but it is connected by the Mary Rhodes Pipeline. The Mary Rhodes Pipeline is 140-mile pipeline. It is, you know, I hate to say this, it is a single point of failure. That, that is something that, that certainly, you know, sometimes makes me a little concerned because when you think about it, 140 miles, you, you have hundreds, thousands of utility crossings that line. You have contractors out there who, we don't know who are out there today, that could be doing something, they could be, you know, landowners could be doing something unassuming, and, and you know, sometimes those kinds of mistakes happen. So, you know, it is a very, very, as we all know, important asset that we need to continue to protect it and maintain it. Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Roy. Oh, hang on. Go ahead.
You know, while you're on the subject, I just want to make sure that I understand, because somebody told me in the past, and I wonder if you would be able to verify this or have more knowledge in terms of, when we look at assessing what our capacity is right now, we look at, as your graph illustrates, Choke Canyon and Lake Corpus Christi. But I heard in the past, we looked at all sources. So when we looked at essentially the western water supply and eastern water supply in terms of gauging where we're at with capacity and our drought conditions, is there, is that, at what point in time did we change? If we did change, or has it always been traditionally Choke and Lake Corpus Christi?
So we get that question a lot, and it, it may be a little bit complicated, but I'll give you the simple answer. The simple answer is, is that we're really governed, and we're governed by the Agreed Order. So there's an Agreed Order, it's called the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, it's the Agreed Order, or AO. It was signed in 2001, and essentially, we had to agree with a number of impacted parties on certain terms of, of how we operate that combined reservoir system. And so if you were to open up that Agreed Order, which is available online, it's available on the website, you, if you read that, you will see very clearly, it's very prescriptive on what we're supposed to do in terms of the Choke Canyon and Lake Corpus Christi is verbatim in there, and it's mentioned time and time again, as those are the two reservoirs that we use to measure our, our proneness to drought. Now, it doesn't say exactly what you have to do when you hit 40% or 30% or 20%, it says you have to do something. It's up to us as good stewards and good business people in our industry to make sure that we're doing the right things to stretch that essential water out as far as we can.
So my question then is, okay, so 2001, that's 20, essentially 24 years ago, right? That somebody came up with this model of measurement. And what level of body is this organization? Are they?
So, so the, the organization that...
That dictated in terms of, what did you call it?
The Agreed Order?
Yeah, the Agreed Order.
So that, that's, that's a binding agreement with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. And so, as I...
Okay, so it's state-level?
It's a, it's a state-level requirement. And, and you know, at the end of the day, if, if there's, if there, and there's, there's a lot. I mean, look, I, I get it, there, there's some frustration with, you know, some of the releases that happened, and I, I see a lot of that. You know, if there was a, you know, if there was an initiative to open that up, which you could, you would have to have all the impacted parties that signed that original agreement brought to a table, and you would have to come to terms with how those changes would be made to satisfy the special interest of every one of those different impacted parties. So it, it would be a pretty big task to do it. I'm not saying it can't be done, but there's, I want to say there's, you know, like 15 parties that are named in that Agreed Order that would have to be at the table. And we, we would be one of them, the City of Corpus Christi would be one of 14 or 15.
So when you look at it, I mean, basically, we are required, right, to have certain releases?
Yes.
And so we have, is there anything that we can do to be able to have somebody take a second look at that, or is that part of that agreement? Does that, does that agreement dictate the amount of release that we have?
Yes, yes. It is very prescriptive as to what you're supposed to release. I will tell you, one of, one of the good things, you know, just is that at 30%, once you hit 30%, there's no releases. So there's no water being released from this, from the, from Lake Corpus Christi that goes into the estuaries in the Oasis Bay system. I will tell you, there's water being released from Lake Corpus Christi, but it is for the purposes of providing raw water to our drinking water plant so we can serve our customers. And there's other customers that also have figuratively a straw in the, in the river there. You have San Patricio, and you have a couple other ones, Robstown, WCID number three.
You know, thank you. I mean, I'm, I'm telling you, the other day, I was walking out to empty my trash, and a guy was walking with his wife and started asking me these questions. And I just ran in the house and locked the door. Anyway, thank you.
And you know, on that note, Peter, I'm sure everybody gets asked, I certainly do. I think it's something we should put on the website if it's not already there. In a very obvious form, literally, the question, you know, why are we releasing water? Why can't we release water in the history? Something, like, make that a tab.
Yeah, we have a frequently asked questions on there.
Well, I know, but that's...
We'll look at it, maybe make it simpler.
25 questions probably, or who knows? I'm saying, make, you know, we're, water is, we're in crisis, right? So make that a tab, as soon as you go to the website, so someone can click on that. We get asked that a lot.
I know.
And it is not something simple that you can undo. You can't, I mean, trying to really undo that is, is a huge feat, so let's do something like that.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Okay. Councilman Scott, did you want to ask now, or continue to wait?
Well, I want to follow up on this comment.
Go right ahead.
Fought this battle for years. So this might be the time, because years ago, we said, look, why do we release, why do we release some water? We're releasing water to take care of the fisheries, hatcheries. We went, yeah, but they're really not on the river, they're on, you know, the backside of Oasis Bay. Hey, I got an idea. What if we release the water where it's supposed to go, instead of releasing 10 gallons, and we get the same benefit with five gallons? Can we, if we prove that up, can we just release, release five gallons, right? Put the water where it needs to be, the little fish are happy, we get to save more water for us, and, and we spent a ton of money. But at the time, how do I say this properly? The governing bodies were really interested in our, in our research, but not really interested in change. But that was, geez, a long time ago, and that might be worth digging that up again and having a conversation. Look, we're not talking about the Agreed Order, but we're talking about maybe if we put it in the right place, would you give us a break? And then maybe an additional break because of, you know, how much effluent we, we drop in the system too. That was, because what I was told last time I was with you fine people was, yeah, yeah, they're excited for us to open it up, and you will release more water. Like, well, that's a bad idea. You know, so you kind of wanted to know the answer. But I guess my point is, instead of having a conversation about just automatically releasing less, like, well, what if we release less, but we put it where it's most beneficial? I mean, I, I get it, right? So the rivers used to flow, and the environment was the environment, and then, you know, we came along and dammed it up, and that has some impact on the environment. I get that. But if we could put water back where it's most beneficial, maybe that's a nice conversation to have. That's all I got.
Want to take that?
Thank you.
Yeah, we got... For the record, Esteban Ramos, I'm the Water Resource Manager for the City of Corpus Christi. Councilman Scott, we do, do that when good times, when we have the opportunities, the Recon Bayou project, where we can pinpoint it in the back of an Oasis Bay to help with estuaries, the environmental concerns that were brought up during that time. So that, there is a... We do get a benefit, we account for it, and so that it goes to those, the regime of each month. So we do, in those good times, when we have that opportunity, it's done.
Okay, good, good questions. So I think it goes without saying, we know how imperative it is to communicate information to, to our community, especially during this ongoing drought, and that's why we created a specially dedicated website to provide daily updates to our community. The website is, as you can see there, stage3.cctexas.com. I just will, you know, say that this website provides information like the combined reservoir levels, it provides U S G S stream flow data, there's over nearly a dozen stream flow data sites. It obviously has the drought status, and it also has a link to our D C P. If you want to read the Agreed Order, you can go to the site and look at it. And then there's just a number of other links to assist the community in ways to conserve water. So hopefully, you know, folks are looking at this, we've gotten some positive impact from the community, and we need to continue, you know, continue to do that work. It's important. One of the things that we've also received a lot of comments from in the community is asking to show consumption, consumption data for various customer classes. In fact, you know, one person, Ted Mandell, is somebody that has reached out quite a bit, and I think it's important. I think it's important to show how customer classes are using water, data is data, and so we agree that more information is important. So we will be updating our website. I was checking earlier, I'm not sure if this is up, but it should be pretty close, but this is what we would be showing. The slide on the left, or the bar chart on the left, I know you can't see it real well, but what it has is, is it has all the different customer classes that we have by color, and you can see how much they've used for 2022, 2023, 2024. I know. It, we'll make it bigger. I apologize that it's not big enough for you to see it, but you will be able to see it, I promise. But really, the point I wanted to make is, is that this is good information, it's information that'll be there for people to look at. And then the slide on the right, again, we'll make that bigger so you can see it. The plan is, is that on a monthly basis, we'll have billed, billed water usage will be provided at the end of the month, it'll be uploaded on the website by customer class. You know, it's not going to be instantaneous, it's not going to be daily information, we don't have the staff to, you know, put daily, daily information by customer class, but what we will do is, is we'll make aggregated monthly data by customer class available, you know, in short order after the month clears. We've got folks that need a Q A and review the data before it goes up, but we'll do that. And I think what's important is, is, you know, you can kind of see even from this graph, you know, the residents have kind of cut back a little bit. I always say, our residential community has been fantastic, they use less water per capita than most any other person in the state of Texas. So my hat's off to the community, you know, we're asking them to do more, and it's a tough, it's tough when you have to do that. You know, the industry, for example, large volume users, they're actually down a little bit this year from last year. And so those are the kind of things that, you know, we want to make sure we have, the community can see that. And so good, good information, and we're happy to talk more about that, and I don't know if there's a question.
Okay. Councilman Barera.
Okay, so I'm, obviously, I'm, I need glasses on top of my glasses, but...
Yeah.
Can you say, because I'm sure you could see it better? So I'm looking at the large volume, so how much did they use in 2022 for, that's for the year?
So for 2022, they, they used...
You can't see it? I mean, you see just the small one too?
Yeah, it's 11,417 billion gallons.
Okay, and then for 2024?
They went up, they went up to 11,000...
No, 2024, I asked 2022, 2024, you were going to 2023. So for 2023, how much did they use?
So 2023, they used 11, 11,926, and then, and that's billion gallons over the entire year. And then they used 10,771 billion gallons, so they...
You said billion or million?
Billion.
Billion.
Yeah.
So our large volume users have dropped down 1.2 billion gallons in water from 2023 to 2024?
Yes, sir.
They, they used 1 point, let me replay, let me re-say that again, 1.2 billion gallons less from 2023 to 2024, or their high-volume water users?
Yes.
To 2.
Okay. So, so they are using less water, they're not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Couple of things. You sure about those numbers that he just gave you, that they've dropped that much?
Well, that's one of the reasons why we like having this data, because, you know, that's, you know, we've looked at this data, it has been Q A, we have put this data up before. So, you know, we have seen the trend here this last year is industry has, has, has cut back. I don't, you know, I don't, we probably need the industry here to maybe kind of explain that in a little bit more fine detail, but the reality is, is, you know, we've got meters, and the meters register water consumption, and the meters are showing that, at least for 2024, the water that has, has been conveyed through those meters for large volume users is 1.2 billion gallons, whatever that number is, and I'm kind of a little challenged on my visual aid being able to see this, but they have used less.
Okay, well, that's good, that just seems like a lot. But my other question is this, because Ted Mandell has reached out, I mean, he's wanting more detailed reports, and I get that, because they want to conserve water. Is there any way that you can tell what areas of the city are using the most? I know a lot has to do with population.
Sure.
But is there any way, I mean, if people want to conserve, then they need to know what's being used on a daily basis, really. I mean, that's what he's wanting to know. What are we using, what can we do now, how much do we need to come back down in order to conserve?
You know, I mean, those are some things that we can look into, Councilwoman, I agree. I mean, you know, at the end of the day, the more information that's available for the public, the public certainly has, and we need to get Reba George, who's our Assistant Director in Billing and Utility Billing Operations, but ultimately, our goal is to be able to have the public have access to see, you know, how they're, how they're using water and how that water is, you know, basically changing over time.
Yeah.
They've got to buy into it.
Yeah, can I just add, I just want to add a little reality, Drew's being nice here. We don't, we would have to reprioritize some of the staff duties, we don't have a unit, or we don't have a person or persons to be providing that information daily. We just don't.
Provide it weekly?
We can look at that, like, this one here provides it monthly, the monthly usage. So we can be, we have to get to begin. It's not like Drew cannot tomorrow begin to show, you know, produce this information and put it online, we just don't have the capability.
And I get that.
But we can begin to do it, yes.
Somebody ought to be able to do that, if they want the public to be involved.
Right.
And I get you can't do it every day.
Yeah.
But I would like to see us try and do something. I know it doesn't have to be you, I know you have people working with you. But we have to do something to get the public engaged, because some of them don't realize how serious it is.
Yeah, so we've heard from the Ted Mandells and others, he's not the only one, we're beginning to see who can do it, how can we do it, what do they have to stop doing, or do we add another position? The same unit where they would do this in, the billing, is the same one where we get calls constantly saying, I've been on the phone for two hours waiting for somebody to answer my phone. You know, so there's a lot of demands on the staff, especially in C C W, but we hear it, and we're reacting, we've been reacting, this is a first attempt, the graph on the right, and there's more to come. Just, but I just want to caution us, it's not overnight, because we have to reprioritize what the staff's doing and figure out how do we do this efficiently, so it can almost be on autopilot.
And I get it, I just think we have to get the public...
Right, and we'll do it, yes.
I agree completely, and I think if, and I know y'all mean, you mean the same thing, is we have to, people have to understand what's happening, right? So it's like when you're raising money at a church, they put the big thermometer up, and, and, and we're keeping track. I mean, it can be something, I don't know, I don't know how you do that part of it, but it seems like what we really need to, even if it's monthly, you know, as mentioned, so I agree with you. All right, thank you. Councilman Scott?
Okay, I'm just going to go random, right? Because it's only my second meeting, don't really know what I'm doing. Hey, so you think that this new plan, the drought contingency plan, will pass the T C E Q test? And they said you got to have a plan, and we heard public comment this morning that this plan will never pass T C E Q, and I have no idea what's...
Well, let me just, and there was a, we were going to talk about that, but since you asked the question, we're going to hit it now.
Let me back in.
Yeah, so this is good. So, look, at the end of the day, we've been in touch with T C Q, and T C Q has told us, get the plan right. We don't want you to submit a plan just to submit a plan, but, you know, your plan is past due, and we're not going to hold that against you, but, but we need to get the plan turned in. And so part of, part of, part of the calculus here was, was, you know, we wanted to make sure that this council, this new council, was thoroughly engaged with this plan, and so we wanted to do, that was, that was the thinking behind that. And like I said, T C Q, who we've been talking to, they have said that, you know, they approved the plan, they want the plan done in a way that our community supports the plan, our council supports the plan, and so that's, that's sort of the instructions we've been...
Let me put this, we don't want to send a plan that we approve that we don't think they're going to approve, right? That would just be silly.
Well, you know, in some ways, the T C Q is looking for us to go through all the checks in the box, and we've checked all the boxes. The T C Q wants the boxes checked, we have checked, this plan today checks all the boxes. So there may be some additional boxes that our community may want us to check, that's fine, but at the end of the day, this plan today satisfies T C Q's requirements.
Answer yes.
Say yes?
Answer yes.
So nice, but, you know, I'm from Kingsville, yes, no, works with me.
Answer yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, number one. Number two, I want to just say, we were in crisis yesterday, we're in crisis today, we're going to be in crisis tomorrow, this is a crisis. And I want to, as much as I beat up past council, I want to thank you all for your work that you did, that started the projects, that you're discussing with us today, that could bring water online. I mean, us new council members are going to take all the credit, just so we're clear, but I just want to point out that you guys have been working on this, this is good stuff. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a guarantee, right? I mean, we don't think, we think the pipeline's going to work, but if it doesn't work, that's a bad day. We, we think we can get the water in the wells, right? But we don't, we haven't cleared all those hurdles, and a couple of council members have discussed those with us. We, you know, we think, so I just want to convey that, you know, because I, what I don't want the public to go, oh, we're done, great, that's awesome, hey, good work, folks, you got 44 million gallons a day more, let's go back, everything's fine. No. Number one, that's not, that's not a guarantee. Number two, something could go wrong, you know, in the middle of that, and number three, that's still not anywhere near where we ought to be. Whether you want to bring another Whataburger to town, or another industrial project to town, this is nowhere near where we should be. So what is our evaporation rate on lake, on the lakes? Every 10 gallons, is it a 50% about? I mean, how do we, how do we discuss that?
We'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
I can tell you, it's a lot.
We had a big argument, it's a group this morning, they thought it was 2/3, I thought it was 50% about.
It's, it's a lot.
Could you just let, you let us know?
You bet.
I got it. Number two, when you said we used 72 million gallons yesterday, is that, that's the water we sent to our great friends to the north? I call them the Yankees, the San Patricio Group, does that include all those?
Yeah, that's, that's all treated water that goes out to all of our treated water customers. So that would include all of our residents, our commercial businesses, it would include some of the big industry, it would include our wholesale treated water customers that we sell water to, like, like San Pat, South Texas Water Authority, Violet, Port Aransas.
But that doesn't, so, okay, but that doesn't include our customers who are taking raw water?
Correct.
That's interesting, I missed, completely missed, how much is that? What's...
It's probably about 30 million gallons a day of raw water that goes out, that we sell. That includes Alice...
So our total daily usage yesterday was 102?
About that.
Because that's the real number, right? I know, you know, isn't it? Shouldn't we be talking about the total total and not treated? What am I missing?
No. You're asking the question from another point of view. So you're asking the question from a supply perspective, and what we, what we describe is what was treated water going out of the system. So what we produce, what are, what are demands, the city of Corpus Christi, were coming out of Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant. Yes, we have to take account for the raw water that you just mentioned from San Pat Municipal, from Alice, Mathis, South Texas Water Authority, and...
Well, that changes, but that changes the conversation, right? Because the simple math is, we used 85 million gallons a day yesterday, and 55 of it came down the pipeline, and what's that, 30 came out of the lake. But we're going to put 44 more, so hey, we're, you know, we don't have to touch the lake, because we're going to have all this new water, with the exception of what you're putting in the wells, but it's not 85 million gallons a day, it's 85 million gallons a day plus 30 million gallons a day of raw water that we sell, that we need to be able to provide, so it's really 110?
Right, so there's about 12 million gallons a day that San Patricio Municipal Water District takes directly off the Mary Rhodes Pipeline.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep, and then there's, and then there's, and there's about 20 million gallons a day that is pulled out of the river. So near our intake structure, there's a couple other intakes, San Pat has an intake, W C I D number three has an intake, Robstown takes their water through W C I D number three, Flint Hills has an intake that they sometimes use, and so does Salines.
Okay, but that, but, you know, we all get excited, we're, you know, we used to use 100, now we're using 85, and yesterday we only used 72, but that's not the total that we used, we used 72 plus another 30, 102, is really what we're using, so we need to keep, because I think people are going to go, oh, my goodness, you know, we only need 7, we're using 72, and we're about to add 44, man, we're done, this is great, we don't need, let's just call it a day, but that's not close to the total. All right, I ramble. Hey, still, the La Vaca Navidad, they're talking about building a new lake, an additional reservoir.
Yes.
Have we had any conversation with, I'm, maybe this is an alternative water supply conversation for later, but is that, have we had a conversation about, hey, what's, what's left? Can we have some of that?
Well, that off-channel reservoir is going to help us indirectly, because they're basically pulling water off the river, and they're putting it into a channel that they're going to impound.
Yeah.
And it's really more for the purposes of Formosa.
Yes, right.
Who's the other big customer up there. But, you know, anytime that there's water that's impounded, there's, there's an indirect benefit to us. So we, we know that Formosa is, you know, there's, there's two big customers that L N R A has, it's the city of Corpus Christi and Formosa, and so we are having, I mean, we talk to L N R A, Pat Briskowski, all the time, he's our general manager, and so if there's a way that we might even be able to kind of work with Formosa to potentially, you know, utilize some of their unused water, if they have it, those are the kind of things that I think are important, and we're having those conversations.
There was a time when Formosa was out of water, came to us begging for help, and we, we let them, we sold them some water, and did it twice.
Okay.
Because we're good neighbors. We, we had an abundance at the time, and they were desperate, and we were nice to them. It might just be nice to remind them that we're all in this together. I, why is, why does it jump from 85 to like 110 million gallons a day in the summer? Like, now it's 85 in the winter, and then the summer it's 110 plus the 30, I guess.
It's, it's basically, you know, a lot of it is irrigation, you know, there's, there's irrigation use that's happening. So, you know, look, at the end of the day, if things continue and we stay in stage three throughout the summer, we're, we're going to see that reduced, because we're, we're not allowing, with, other than some exceptions, right? We're going to see that number come down. If you, if you go to other cities that are a little bit different than ours, where there is a much larger preponderance of residential and commercial use, you see a huge delta in the summer. Because, why? Because people are irrigating. You know, I'll just give you an example, Houston typically averages about 350 million Houston typically averages about 350 million gallons a day of water in the winter. In the summer, they can almost double that, 600 million gallons a day.
It's all just irrigation.
Almost all of it is irrigation. People like to water.
Well, like, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes. Councilwoman Campus.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilman Scott, for, for asking all those really great questions. Okay. So you know, we, when did we go, when did we raise the, the water rates? Because I'm thinking, did it affect the, you know, the usage here, the slide that we're looking at right now? Like, that's what I've been trying to figure out. Like, when we raised the rates, you know, essentially to all the classes, when did this, when did it take effect? Didn't it take effect last year?
I believe so.
So wouldn't it affect it, you know, because it was what, 2022 that we're looking? Councilman Barera had said, oh, well, you know, they're using less water. So I'm just trying to figure out, could it be that it's because they're paying more for water? Is that a possibility?
You, you could surmise that? So yeah, I'm just, I had to do a little dust off the brain. But 2024 is when those new rates went in.
Okay. So that, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to see, you know, by rate, by classes, what we were using, like you've done here. Okay. So that's one thought as to how or why, you know, maybe they're using less waters because it's, it's costing them more water and they're trying to figure out, you know, how they can save. Okay. The other is the exemption fee. I didn't approve or I, I did not vote for the exemption fee on the, on our last vote because of it again puts it back all on the residents. Because as much as we cut back, and I think you've heard, you know, plenty of people making that statement, that we're not going to be able to get out of the drought unless, you know, all classes are participating and cutting back where we can. So the main thing about like this recent drought exemption, I mean drought contingency plan is, you know, Councilman Klein, I mean, we were ready to vote on it right then and there. I remember when it was brought up and yeah, TCEQ doesn't have an, an issue with approving. It's us. It's the residents. What are we going to be able to live with, with five years? Because this is why it's important that we take input from all the classes. For instance, you were able to change a lot of it and for the benefit of the small businesses because they were like already, we're in stage three and this is affecting us, you know, financially. And so yes, thank goodness that we were, we still had not approved our drought contingency plan. So they had time to give input and, and I think we're making some headway there. But again, this is about being open and transparent and I would like to recommend or suggest, like it has, that we give at least more time because right now you want us to vote on this now without any more public input, at least for people that work in the evening and maybe for us other potential classes. So I would be hoping and suggesting that some of my other council members agree that we need more time to review this. I mean, we've already waited, you know, two, more than two years. It was, you know, so, so I think we, we, this is too important to just rush. The other is, let me see, back to the question that, or you tried to answer, I don't know if you actually did, is how much water are we actually using? I mean, I heard Councilman Scott say, oh, it's 85 million and then we have another 30 million. What, is it 115 million? Because that comes out to 115 million, all the classes together. You, we don't, it's not clear, is it?
Councilwoman, I'm, I'm happy to tell you exactly. I, I mean, we have meters. We're not, we're not embellishing anything that the meters are doing. So meters are reporting, you know, how much water we're using.
Okay. So what is it?
Well, like I said, yesterday, when, yesterday we pumped 76 million gallons a day. So that, that, that's from Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant. Now, you know, Councilman Scott had some questions about where does some of the, where does the raw water go? You know, we can get you that specific information. I mean, generally it's about 30 million gallons a day of raw water goes to other customers, whether it be San Patricio Municipal Water District, whether it's Alice, whether it's Mathis, whether it's Beeville. So the water goes where the water goes and we have meters that show that. So you know, I couldn't tell.
But fluctuate.
Couldn't tell you exactly, you know, what that is, but I can get you the exact number. But you know, to the, to the point that Councilman Scott made, we have treated water. We've got information up here that says where that treated water goes. And if you want to see exactly where the raw water goes, we, we can, we can show you that.
Okay. What else? I guess at the time that, because now we're in stage three and at what point, the drought contingency plan, it does state that it is the manager's decision to decide when we would move into, just we're drastic, we're in, yeah, emergency. But according to this, I mean, this would say under the proposed right now is 20%. We're already under 20%. We're at 18, I don't know what the latest, but we're already under 20%, aren't we?
18.7.
18.7. So here we were already be underwater emergency. So we.
I don't think it. We're, we're in, in the, in the new proposed plan, we, we would be in stage three.
Well, I, I'm looking at, I thought it says 20% in it, this one?
Stage three.
Less than 20%. We're at 18.7.
Okay, that's stage. Right. That's stage three.
Okay. So then at what point do we, does the manager then say, you know what, we're, we're at critical, we, it's still up to him? It's not up to the council to decide?
Yes, there, there's discretion. The city manager has discretion to call a water emergency when he feels that it's an emergency. So you know, an emergency could happen when you have 60% on our combined reservoir levels and all of a sudden you have a breach of the dam. You have something major that happens that's unintended, that causes a major collapse of part of the drinking water system. So that would be a water emergency. A water emergency could very well be the case where, you know, we're in stage three and we continue to see a drop and, you know, something happens to the Mary Roads Pipeline. That would be a water emergency.
Okay. Well, the other thing I wanted to raise is like Lake Navidad, like you say, they actually initiated stage two, if I'm not mistaken, like a month ago and they only had, you know, their level was 75%, 75% and they were already in stage two. So that's why I'm, I'm wondering about, you know, all this combination of if they decide, I don't know, like at what, 70%? They might go into stage three? What is, how does that affect us? And you know, right?
Right. So, so as I understand it, and Esteban here may, may need to help me, I believe their stage three is when the Lake Texana reservoir drops below 50%.
Okay.
And then at that point, there may be, there may be some curtailment that, that could happen. But I think there's a little bit of discretion that they, that they being, they being the LNR have. So we'll be talking to them. I mean, we're talking to them and like I said, we mentioned just a minute ago that, you know, there, there may be some, some water availability from La Vaca Navidad River through Formosa. Formosa has contracts with LNR and you know, they, they had some unused water last year that, that, you know, that didn't get used. So you know, we're talking to them. If there's some unused or available water that we may be able to work out, that, that would be great.
And, and hopefully we will be able to see these numbers, you know, the comparison so, so that we can try to say, okay, you know what, last year the residents, just like we were seeing here, we're really doing a great job. You know, we really are cutting back and you know, some of the other customer, you know, classes maybe, you know, could use a little bit of help. But the main thing, I guess my main point is that I want to see a little bit more time. I don't think, you know, we need to rush this. Again, it's going to be for another five years. Let's make sure we get all the input. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. On page three of the drought contingency plan or proposed, authorization, city manager, the city manager or designee in exercise of city manager's discretion may initiate, terminate or any stage or restrictions at any particular, particular time as deemed necessary. The city manager or designee shall notify the members of council, of city council before implementing any measure. This is a nonstarter for me. This should say not notify, but shall receive authorization from city council before implementing any measures.
What, what page are you on?
Page three. Number five, authorization.
What's the question?
Okay. It says, the city manager or his designee shall notify the members of, of city council before implementing measures. This should read, shall receive authorization from city council before implementing any measures.
He's reading this bottom. Shall notify the members of city council before implementing any measures. And you're, and you're suggesting to change that?
Change it from notify to receive authorization from city council.
So you know, that, that's.
Before implementing.
Okay.
Measures. Not necessarily declare, but before implementing measures because there's variations to those implement, to what can be implemented and what can't be, right?
Stages here doesn't, because you're right, Councilman, there's surcharges that could be or.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Right? So it's not necessarily to get, you know, because ultimately we get the phone calls, right?
Right.
We get the, the vitriol and the hatred. So I want to make sure that we have authority to say, okay, we didn't approve that, but yes, we did because we, we pre-approved it.
Yeah.
I don't feel comfortable pre-approving stuff.
The stages, I would, I would suggest that the stages can be declared, but any surcharges or any.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I said.
Okay, good, yeah.
I didn't say anything about the stages. You can declare the stages, but you can't implement anything.
I agree with that. Yeah, I don't, right. This council needs to be approving rate adjustments or other things continued on the stage. I agree with that.
Okay.
It says it later on in the book, you know, in the document later on it states that, but here.
So you would scratch out notify the members of the and replace it with receive authorization from.
When it comes to restrictions or, you know, the.
Right. That's the last sentence. The city manager or designee shall receive authorization from city council before implementing any measures.
Right. Except the declaration itself.
The declaration is a separate sentence.
Yeah, yeah.
You could declare it all you want.
Yeah.
It's when you implement the actual.
I agree with that because this, the plan later on says the council has to approve the surcharges and other measures.
Okay. But this says, this is in contrary.
Right, I agree.
Okay, what page are you on?
This is page three under number five authorization, the last sentence.
Go ahead, Esteban, yeah.
I'm a little confused, just so I can catch up to you. When you, when you're describing measures, that you're saying that measures would be restrictions in your sentence?
Okay. I'm going by what language you have.
I know, I know. Right now, the, the language is that the city manager will, will, can implement the stages.
Right. He can declare the stages.
And those stages have restrictions.
Right.
And, and then there are optional measures such as the, the surcharge and he needs council's approval for that. But are you?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So what he's, what this is saying is that at any state, at any time, he can declare any stage at any time regardless of whether the percentages are there or not. That's, that's what this says here. City manager, and I'm going in the second sentence of this, the city manager or designee shall have the authority to initiate, terminate or terminate drought or other water supply emergency stages as described in the, in the DCP.
And you're in agreement with that?
I'm in agreement with that. You can declare it all you want. I mean, if we're at 50%, you want to declare stage two?
I understand that, Esteban, yeah.
Okay. You can do that, but then you have to come to us and ask for authorization to implement the measures because we may not agree with it.
So you, so you're saying optional measures and I'm asking, is a restriction an optional measure?
No.
No.
I'm saying all measures have to get approval by, by city council. There might be some, some caveats to that. Let's say he, he decides to go to stage two at 40, you know, 45% just as a precautionary. We, you know, and then you implement stage two drought restrictions. Well, we may not all agree with that, right? So you have, I want to have some, some leeway here to have those conversations and not have it being automatic.
But you're saying, Gil, you're saying we authorize it?
We authorize the implementation of measures.
Of his recommendation?
At his recommendation. He's going to recommend the, that we go into a drought stage and then there's measures associated with that. We have to approve it. It's subject to our approval. That's all I'm asking.
Notifications after the fact.
Notifications after you implement it.
So subject to our approval. So you may come and say, hey, I think we need to do this, this and this. And we may say, maybe not. Let's talk about it.
And this too, yeah. And just to carry the conversation, there's two types of measures, ones that are, you know, pretty certain and then optional measures. You're referring to both, Councilman Hernandez?
No.
Oh, yeah?
Well, yes, I'm referring to both in terms of approval from city council. Because you're, you can go into any stage.
Yeah.
Without, you know, with whatever reasoning you may have, it may not, you, you don't have to exclusively stick to what we have prescribed.
Right.
Right? You know, 50% level, 40%, 30%.
Yeah, right.
You can go at 45. You can make that recommendation.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
But if you do that.
Yeah.
I, I would, we would need to have a reason, I mean, you're going to have to explain to us at one thing. And I don't expect you to implement the measures without getting our approval.
Okay, that's fine. He wants both regular measures and optional measures to have city council approval.
Right.
And we're okay with that, Councilman.
Okay.
You're right. We're okay with that.
Okay. Going forward, I want to talk a little bit about the surcharges in terms of how you calculated that, right? So you have for residential, this is going on page 12. This is just the initial one. You have some, some requirements here. For residential accounts, a surcharge of $1 per thousand gallons over 7,000 gallons. Okay? Can you describe how you got to the 7,000 gallons?
Yes. How did we get?
Yeah, I, you've explained it to me during our briefing, but I want, I want you to explain it publicly.
Okay. So how did we get these numbers? Not just the 7,000 gallons, but.
Let's go by each one of them. How'd you get to 7,000?
Essentially what it is, is it's taking approximately 25%. So 25% above the average use and you, you.
So the average use being 6,000.
6,000 gallons.
So you go a 25% above that and every, every, every amount above that 25% average, you, you create the surcharge for.
Correct.
Okay. So you do this, so 55,000 gallons for commercial accounts. Where did you get 55,000 gallons?
That, that is the average use for our commercial class.
Plus 25%?
Correct.
Okay. So you have 55 plus 25%. The 12,842,000 gallons, where is that number from?
That, that's the same thing.
So that's an average of your, all your users.
Non-exempt large volume users.
Non-exempt large volume users. So when you say non-exempt, San Patricio Municipal Water District would be exempt, right?
Yes, but they have Steel Dynamics, South Texas.
Okay, but that would fall under their drought contingency plan, right? Or would it fall under ours?
Falls under what we can, they are, we're charging them. So they can fall underneath that.
Okay. So since, for example.
Well, excuse me, excuse me. Sorry. Let me back up, back up. It would be the South Texas Beef and Naval Air Station. South Texas Beef and Naval Air Station.
Can you speak in the microphone, please?
South Texas Beef and Naval Air Station.
And those are non-exempt?
Large volume.
Large volume users. So only them?
Yes, we only had a handful of those. Yes. Very small group.
Okay, so you're talking about people that are not under the drought exemption surcharge?
That's right.
So these two are the only ones that are not in the drought exemption surcharge?
That I'm remembering right now, the second, yes.
And so between Naval Air Station and South Texas Beef, you add those two up, divide by two, and you get 12.8 million gallons a day?
Average plus 25%.
Plus 25%. So wow, I didn't know they used that much water.
That's what I was thinking. What the hell?
When did South?
This is for the month, too.
This is on a per month, right?
They use 12.
Wow. That's a lot of water.
That's a lot.
Okay, and so these are the only ones. And then, so then you have the surcharge, which is the 31 cents, which is on page 18. Okay, so looking at this, so let's say South Texas Beef starts going over the 12,800,000, and you start, and we're in stage three, then they get charged, what, $4?
Correct.
No, you only get another stage three?
Stage three is two.
$2 for every, surcharge for every 1,000 gallons above 12.8 million. Same thing with the Naval Air Station.
Yes.
How much time does he have?
Wait, wait, wait. Do we get time?
Yeah, you can. 10 minutes.
Yes.
And you speak twice on the issue. I'm going to go back really quickly on authorization. What was, I know it said, or Councilman was talking about making it, changing it to say, receive authorization from the city council before implementing any measures. Any measures meaning any measures?
Any measures, that's why I asked twice, so I could be clear, so I could convey what y'all are wishing to do.
I think, aren't we talking a little more on the higher end, more drastic measures?
So let me give an example and just see if I understand this correctly. So in the event that we had a catastrophic failure, there was a breach of the dam, there was a Mary Rhodes Pipeline failure where that water's not coming back for a while, the city manager would execute a water emergency situation where we would probably be trying to close valves and trying to protect the system to allow water to go to hospitals and really critical care places.
Right.
Is that something that we would have to come back to council to get authorization?
No, you should not. The city manager should be making those decisions on his own. He's a city manager. That's my concern. I don't believe that is an intent, that we need to be micromanaging, you know, a person who's over a one point, I mean, it just, no. I feel like we need to really talk about, the word "any" measures is extremely broad. And I understand, Councilman, what you're talking about, but I think we need to bring it in.
I would say the optional measures, you know, the optional measures of the surcharges, that's a rate.
Look, if you want to have catastrophic language in there, you can carve that out, okay? But everything else, I mean, you're not going to, you know, just give them carte blanche just because of a possibility of a catastrophic failure.
Now, let's go to another, go to a stage three, because of water emergency. Go to a stage two. So on stage two, this book here, the Drought Contingency Plan, says that once you're in stage two, you eliminate flushing of water mains, you, let's see, you can only water once every other week, okay? In stage two, once every other week. So what Hernandez is saying is, I gotta come to city council to say, is it once every other week? Or, you know, this isn't automatic right now. The optional things are, do we do a surcharge? There's only one optional measure, that's surcharge. That, I would agree, city council, it says it right here, that city council needs approval for the surcharges.
Right.
You know, that's, I don't know if that's in there, but there's things that are prescriptive, meaning you do this list, and then this optional.
Right.
Councilman Hernandez's idea is, everything has to be approved by the council.
No, well, I'm not for that. You were going to say, something like with the home builders, what was your answer?
That, just to answer Councilman Scott's question, that is a optional measure in the DCP, that the council has that decision point. That is your decision.
You would have to approve that.
You, the council would have to approve that.
Right.
Okay, Councilwoman Paxton. Let me find my notes again.
I think it needs to stay the same.
I'm so sorry, guys, we got sidetracked.
I know we're talking about all of these optionals catastrophic or not, so my question may have to wait till the end because it was more on, it's really important to me, much like the home builders, that I feel like that's input I really would like to have going forward with how, for myself, I would vote on a lot of these. And yes, we can have really good input here, but I don't think it's a full picture until we've brought everyone in. And part of your presentation here, you mentioned that we were currently in ongoing public input, so I was curious if you could list out some of those measures. I think the community would like to be a part of that discussion and bring in, and I know you guys have really done a great job felding a lot of input through emails and calls and those types of things, but maybe a public session, maybe you have all that planned and I haven't seen it yet. So if you could share some of that, I'd be really interested in that.
You know, I will say this. We've had a lot of community input. Back in 2023, we had Councilwoman Campos and Klein, we had several community input sessions. If there are some comments that we need to incorporate, we are here to incorporate. I have no objection with doing a town hall if that's what, you know, this council wants to do, but frankly, I really think we're at a point where we've checked pretty much every box. Now, we talked to the Home Builders Association last night. I asked them, you know, what were some of their concerns that they had. One of them was the thing that Esteban just talked about, which is restricting new meters. You know, that's something that this council would have, that's optional. That's something that the council would have to approve. So I don't think that that is anything that would, you know, should concern the Home Builders Association because that's something that the council would have that ability to do. You know, the other thing that they mentioned was pool covers, and we haven't even talked about pool covers.
Oh, I know. There's a whole slew of other sections.
Well, and I'll just tell you this, we're not in the business of, you know, looking over people's back, you know, patios and looking and seeing what kind of pool covers they have. What we're saying is, is, hey, look, let's try to cover these pools approximately 100% of the surface area. If you want to put a, you know, an expensive pool cover in, that's your prerogative. If you want to put some flotation devices in the pool, you know, really, at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is create good stewardship. We're not trying to over-regulate our community. I think most people know what they need to do to minimize evaporative loss. And so that, to me, is just good practice, you know? We don't want to over-regulate.
I know that there's a couple of areas that I think to kind of wrap this a little bit up, and this is just the first reading right now, but, you know, things like we had, I had a mobile detailing representative who owns a business locally reach out. One of the things I read in this proposal is allowing, you know, handwashing of your vehicle with a five-gallon bucket, and that was to be applied to residential. But, you know, when we're looking at the impact right now to the community, you know, Peter, you've been really good about, you know, when we went into restriction level three, and we brought these little one-off concerns, like the community gardens, people's plants at their houses, you were able to address those very quickly by taking in those concerns. So something like this, that's a measure that's being proposed here. Even if we pass everything right now and we follow your schematic, we're still looking at a few weeks before these businesses are addressed by implementing this. So for tonight's sake, I'm interested in kind of hearing, you know, can we wrap up those types of things, get these businesses a little bit of aid? We're looking at, the monthly breakdown that you have here is November and December. We were in drought phase two since summer, so November may be a good, people were already conscientious that we're low water. Moving into December, I think it was, we were already a week or two into December when we issued droughts level three. There's three categories, basically, where there's some substantial reductions here. Looking at residential, I think our residential users are reducing pretty much as much as they can based on a lot of this stuff. So for me, tonight, what I want to hear is what can we do to consolidate these efforts, get our business members, make them, you know, let them see a little bit of reaching across that aisle, and to what the mayor said earlier, making this very available online. Maybe we do a completely separate public information piece that's just easy access, easy understand. This is where we're at.
Absolutely.
Councilman Barera.
What's the wind velocity of a swallow?
It's got to be in that binder somewhere.
It gets redlined out.
It's a no-starter. Non-starter. How many more slides do you have?
Man, we're going to be here a while. We're going to have to.
What I would respectfully request from my colleagues before we start amending is that we let you finish your presentation. And I know Mark's anxious. He's learning how to use his buttons. So, yeah, I would respectfully request.
I'm going to go quick.
I hope you don't, I hope you don't count that one time against me.
Okay, well, let's fly through this. Look, one of the things that I was pretty amazed at is that Corpus Christi was the first city to develop and implement a drought contingency plan, first in Texas. That's pretty cool, 1986, Corpus Christi. So, you know, we have a history of being first, that's good. And so I would say we have an obligation to continue to lead by example. In 2013, the two plans, they were a water and a drought contingency plan, they were separated out, probably because the drought contingency plan requires approval from council before it goes to TCQ. The water conservation plan does not require council approval. So that's pretty much it. Next slide. We spent a lot of time here talking, and really, at the end of the day, what is a drought contingency plan? So a drought contingency plan is a business plan that provides, yes, that provides a framework, okay? Let's see here. I'm going to keep going. Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Esteban, and I'm going to let him fly through some of these proposed changes.
So I'm going to fly through the proposed changes. One of the proposed changes that we had implemented after listening to the community and hearing through Councilman Campos's listening sessions and other sessions that we had was his idea of getting out to the community earlier. So we're wanting to engage what we're calling a water shortage watch. This would be when we drop below 50%, we would enter into a communication, getting the community to realize where their water comes from, how their water is being used, and the options that they can follow. And it's a voluntary situation where we're asking them. Again, hearts and minds, changing people's philosophies is hard, you got to get them rolling. Stage one, we've talked about, under stage one, there's really not a lot of changes that we're proposing with regards to the restrictions. What we are implementing under stage one is more of a best management practices. Again, these were, these were things that we heard from these listening sessions, talking to the community, so they know how to utilize their water, what can they do. They wanted to know, if you're asking me to conserve, how best to do that. So we put a list, we start this list under stage one in the new DCP so that we can better help the community understand what they can do. Dropping to stage two, so now we're at below 30%, we start seeing more changes to the water restrictions, and what we're doing here is trying to be more clear in our rules and regulations under it by laying out irrigation of landscape areas with hose-end sprinklers, our automatic irrigation systems shall be limited to once every other week. No change to hand watering. So we spell it out. We make sure that people realize you can still hand water, okay? The big thing that we're also engaging under stage two in this proposal is an idea of the pool covers. So we start communicating, we start talking, we start preparing the community for a potential stage three by asking them, a person who owns, leases, or manages an outdoor swimming pool, including city-owned swimming pools, shall begin preparation for stage three to have at least approximately 100% of their pool cover, pooled cover surface, not in use, excuse me. And we don't tell you the means and methods. Some of the things that we suggest, you can buy floaties, you can buy little, you can go out and you can put a nice cover, or you can use a tarp and put it. So we're not getting into that specificity of how to do it, but we're preparing you for stage three in that change. Additionally, in stage two, we start talking, we started talking and hearing from the community about motor vehicles. Right now, the plan does not address the motor vehicles watering during stage two, but you got to remember the fundamentals of what a drought contingency plan is. It is an emergency plan. It is, you're in a situation where you start having to worry about where you are, what's going on, how I can see the future. And so we start implementing what they call a kind of progressive enforcement. So what we're doing in proposed language for stage two, the use of water to wash a motor vehicle not occurring on the premises of a commercial car wash is allowed on the designated watering day. And so we'll designate a watering day. The city manager, we already have one, we have a great website where we have communication out there. Our data dashboard out there tells everybody, what is your watering day? There's a nice map, there's a nice QA, QC, or excuse me, FAQs that could help you determine what is your day, how to do this. So we start implementing this idea for the car washes, it's for, at your residential, and you're still getting to do it, okay? Also, we implement a linen program. You've probably already seen this in larger cities where linen at hotels and motels, they ask you to, basically, if you're additional of a linen towel, change by request. So you have to ask to request your towels, your linens. Stage three, so this is where we're below 20%. We get into more the restrictive parts of the DCP, and people start seeing this. Currently, irrigation of landscape areas shall be prohibited at all times. So we heard from the community, we looked out, we talked about it, what can we, what can we do? Irrigation, the proposed change is irrigation of turf grass shall be prohibited at all times. So that's your turf grass, it's your grass. Drip irrigation for foundations and landscape beds is allowed every other week on the designated watering schedule. The watering schedule will be determined by the city manager or designee. Customers will be made aware of their designated watering day, again, by the communication, our dashboard getting out on the website, so they have an easy way to find it. But we're also saying watering of trees, vegetable gardens, a lot of people out there, different organizations, you know, volunteer at parks and stuff have vegetable gardens, shrubs, potted plants, is permitted at any date if it is by means of handheld hose with positive shut off, meaning you have a little gun, that's an example of it at the end, everybody kind of sees it, or if they filled a five-gallon bucket or less and they could utilize it. So you're giving the opportunities still built into the rules for you to continue doing this activity. We get down to the pools. So now we're implementing the pool cover in this stage. So that is the major change we're seeing under stage three. So we move to, again, we talk about the linen program, so we've implemented that. And now we get to another part of what we've talked about and that we have, working with our community, our proposal is to, the use of water to wash motor vehicles by boats, trailers, or other vehicles not occurring on the premises of a commercial car wash is allowed by hand with a five-gallon bucket or less on your, on your stage two watering day. You have an opportunity. Where it's, right now, you don't have an opportunity, it's prohibited. So now we've built in an opportunity for you to have, such as mobile car washing, or myself to wash a car, but I have to do it by hand. So you're going to have to little work for it. And then to clarify, because there were some communication issues, people didn't, whether we have four stages, what's going on, we're making it clear, we're changing the name from stage four to water emergency. So it's clear to everybody, this is an emergency. We're talking about, when we get to the end of the rope after stage three, when do we declare it? It's an emergency. It can happen exactly what Drew has stated. We lose the Mary Rhodes, we lose some input into ONS. We have to call it, call it a water emergency. So at this point, I'm going to turn the mic back over to Drew.
We're in the home stretch. Okay, this was, and we've talked, we've already talked a little bit about this, so we'll go pretty quick. But ultimately, as we've just described, the city council has the ultimate authority to implement surcharges. These are the surcharges that we've proposed as part of this plan. The current surcharges that we have, we think they're, we think they're a little bit inequitable because they really hit a much lower volume of usage. Let's just say, we'll talk about residential customers. So the current surcharge, if it was to be enacted, would be based on 3,000 gallons of use. And that's, that's a pretty low volume of water when you think about the average person uses 6,000 gallons. So really, what we're not, we're not trying to impact the average customer. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to discourage people who use a little bit more water than the average person, which would be somebody who's using typically about 7,000 gallons. And then even at that point, you're only paying that surcharge on the amount of water over the 7,000 gallons. So we think that would, is the right approach. And again, city council would have to approve that before we would, before it would be enacted. And we applied the same logic, not just to residential customers, but to commercial customers, and then the customers who are not in the drought exemption fund. So the drought, the drought exemption, or the drought surcharge exemption fee, it does not exempt any of these customers from drought restrictions. I'm just going to say that again. It does not exempt any customers from, exempting from drought restrictions. So if you're a large volume user, you still have to comply with all the same things that are in the drought exception plan, the drought contingency plan. The only thing that you don't have to do is you don't have to pay a surcharge if a surcharge was ever implemented. But we haven't implemented surcharges, not yet. So ultimately, the large volume users are not doing anything different than what all of our other customers would be doing, right? So they still, they can't water outside, they can't, they have to follow the same rules that every other customer class has to follow. Okay, next slide. Public engagement, this kind of goes back to what we've been doing over the last couple of years. So in 2023, there was a concerted effort to bring this plan back to city council, which it was on January 31 of '23. As a result of that, there was several, what we call, listening sessions that was held by various council members at the time. And then we've continued to have, you know, citywide events to educate folks on the drought contingency plan. We've had this plan, it's been posted on the website, it's there today, it's been there for, I would say, ever. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we know that it's important to make sure that we've got that input. So we have been reaching out to the landscapers, and the nurseries, and the car washers, and the folks that are in the pool industry and the trade associations. So to the extent that we need to continue having some more of those conversations, we're absolutely happy to do that.
And Drew, you reached out to the industry partners as well?
Yes, we did.
Bob Paulson's here, but we worked with that, those customers as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So with that said, we'll conclude the presentation. So with that said, we'll conclude the presentation.
Okay, Councilman Barrera.
Okay, so I was looking at, can you go back a couple of slides? Let's see. One more, one more. What's an irrigation account?
So an irrigation account is somebody that has a meter that is only used for irrigating, so they don't get charged the wastewater costs associated with the meter. So if somebody is purely just using water for irrigation purposes, they can buy a separate meter, have it installed, and that water is only used for irrigation purposes.
And what kind of, what kind of business would that be? An example?
It could be residential properties, it could be corporate businesses.
Okay, back up on another slide. I saw something for, yeah, I had a question about drip irrigation. So earlier during public comments, somebody made a, said that drip irrigation was probably better than hand watering. So have, I guess that's the thing, how do you, how do you police that? Or is it, is there, it's difficult, or, I guess, how do you determine? What facts do we know that that's a true statement or a false statement?
Did you want to take that?
So it goes back, I heard the comment, I wouldn't agree that drip irrigation, because you have a lot of overuse of it.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to know if we agreed or disagreed. I mean, Jason may come up in public comment next time and make a statement. And, you know, I can't remember the last time I spent the night in a hotel, and they offered me, that they didn't, they basically said, we're doing it, we're changing the linens every other night. I don't think I've stayed at a hotel recently where they've come to move, change the, you know, unless it's in another state or something. So I don't know why you wouldn't encourage that sooner, since it's just a request. You know, that's just my whole thing. And then those are just simple things. And let's go back to the penalties. So right now, the individuals that aren't affected, let's go back to the surcharges. So right now, for residential customers, the only ones that would be subject to surcharges were those that use more than 7,000 gallons.
Correct.
So typically, senior citizens, you know?
Five to 6,000 gallons.
Yeah, so, okay. Have we thought about how much based on, and this is something I don't need to know today, but something you may consider, is determine based on our current usage, how much revenue that might generate?
We can get to that.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for it today, not even this week, I mean, just something that. And then for non-exempt large account users, those are over 12 million gallons a day. I mean, we've only got one user that does that, so. And other than, and then we can't charge, we obviously can't charge a surcharge to the Naval Air Station or the Army Depot. Is that correct? We can, we can't?
I think we can.
We can? Okay. They're not paying a surcharge?
They're not paying the surcharge, so.
Okay, okay, well, that sounds like, that sounds good. I think that if they understand it's predictable, we're all in this together. Okay, I move for approval.
Okay. This is a first reading, so this will come back, and there's time to, we're able to amend, correct?
There's an amendment that's required to section four, it's just to change the effective date, the effective date of the ordinance as Drew presented, it's February the 17th. So we just need to strike out March 1, 2025 in section four, and then insert February 17th of 2025, so it lines up.
All right, I move to amend to strike, to move the amendment to, from when?
March 1st.
March 1st to, correct.
We're still going to have all the public input.
Yes.
Okay, we're still going to have all the additional public input that you've requested. Okay, and then you've also, by the way, I, well, I made a motion, I guess there's got to be a second, but the other thing is that you've addressed a lot of the issues of all the small businesses that basically you've dealt with, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to ease everybody's mind for that. Thank you.
Okay, was there, yeah, so the second was to amend it?
So first, we need to amend it to include that date, and then we'll approve it as amended. So Roland made a...
Second to the amendment.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Let me get these two, Hernandez's first, and then we got you. Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, since we are not going to amend that section five, I will not be voting against this. Plus, we need more community engagement, so I'll also be voting against it until we do that. Thank you.
Two readings.
Yeah, we have two readings, so they're still... Yeah, that's fine. Councilman, come through.
So we have a chance of changes in the second reading, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Yes, for the amendment.
For the amendment, so please submit your vote.
Oh, can we do a voice vote on that one? Because I just have...
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no, and raise your right hand.
So no in the amendment? Okay.
Any opposed, say no, and raise your hand, please.
Okay, so Gumples, no in the amendment.
Okay.
Okay, and then we just need to, okay, so it passes, right?
Correct, I'm sorry, yes, the motion passes.
So then we approve it as amended?
Okay.
Yes.
Entertained a motion to approve as amended?
And Everett, okay.
Who did second?
Everett did the second.
And Everett.
I did the second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, and raise your right hand.
I'm sorry, go.
Okay, so we have four?
Yeah, do you want me to, I can use the, I have this one programmed if you'd like me to use it.
You've got the four.
Okay.
Okay. The motion carries. All righty. Drew, thank you very much. Okay, so then it was you three, four, five. Okay, so the motion fails. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Raise it high, Mrs. Vaughn. Okay, so the motion fails. So...
So you're not approving?
Okay, so then what is the proposition?
Not happy.
Now, let me ask you this. Who haven't we spoken with, and how long have we been working on this?
2023, this has been on the website for, since 2023.
Yep, Ms. Gumples, hang on, please.
And so we've met with the landscapers, the landscapers were here today, they indicated that every day we go without giving them some help, they're having lots of issues with their businesses. We've met with the pool association, we've met with the large-volume industry.
The mobile car wash, the...
Mobile car washes. Trying to think who else.
Okay, so I guess I need to know, and I know we've got Ms. Gumples, we've got Ms. Vaughn on the system here, what, who are we, who, what is it y'all want to do? Ms. Gumples, go ahead. It does, but they need to know, you know, you need, I mean, it may just be a personal thing where you need more time to...
We just need, exactly, that's all I've been saying, is that we need more time. As a matter of fact, like you just said, all those, you know, businesses, that just came within the last couple of weeks that y'all addressed, and that's because, you know, they got organized and they decided to come, but...
Councilwoman, I would tell you, we've been talking to the Landscape Association for months. We met with them in the fall. So it's been, it's been an ongoing dialogue with them. We've met with them, we've met with the pool association folks, we've been doing this for quite some time.
Okay, the only thing is that has changed, Drew, is that we went into stage three, and that did not happen until December, the end of December. So it did not start affecting their pocketbook until just a couple of weeks ago. So that's what I'm saying, you may have been talking to them, but it didn't hit them until we actually hit stage three. So all I'm saying, and what I've been hearing from the constituents and from just now, is that they need more time to review this. Y'all want us to approve it, and then second reading, you know, in two weeks? No, I think we, and we still need to identify when we're going to have those meetings, those public input meetings, so, no, that's why I'm voting against it. But like Mayor, you said, we need another time, we need to decide when? Is that what you're, a deadline?
Yeah, we need to talk about that, but it's...
Yeah, two weeks is good enough.
You're going to need to send the council, you're going to need to send everyone, a list of everyone you have spoken with. I'm not saying that there needs to be, maybe Bob Paulson back there is saying, I need more time, I don't know, but they have been speaking to people, and I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, when you're in stage two, and you can see the forecast, because we're on the phone with the NWS Weekly, you know what's coming. So yes, they anticipated this, that's why everything everyone has asked for, for the most part, it's in here. Now, I'm not saying you may not, council members may want to take this and review it and take more time, I get that, but I think, I would guess, most of the different industries, they have been spending a lot of time with staff, but nonetheless, doesn't matter, the motion failed, so we're going to move forward, and, you know, it's not, we're not moving forward, we're not moving forward. So right now, I don't know, Peter, what is the timeline?
Mayor, may I reclaim my time? Because I was speaking, and then...
Okay, well, she asked me a question.
I asked him a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you want me to answer the question?
Because it has to be...
Yeah, so we're going to, we plan to come to city council on the 11th of February, that'll be the next council meeting, that'll be a first reading of, maybe there's some changes, I'm not sure, but, and then there'll be another week, so it'll be the 18th, it'll be the second read and adoption, so, and then there'll be the implementation the day thereafter. So it's a week delay for all the irrigation folks that were here, and...
Well, that's exactly...
So that just means more jobs lost, and, yeah.
Landscape folks have no relief there, right?
Right.
There's no relief.
Put off their relief.
Okay, so the relief, okay, so the relief that I'm talking about, and it's nice that we're, you know, making sure that all the industries are being addressed, but how about the regular customers? Let's make sure that we all understand it, that's why I was asking for more time. But it looks like maybe February the 11th would be the next first meeting, and we'll have the first reading, but in between... Okay, but in between now and the 11th, you're going to be holding some public input sessions?
Happy to do it.
Okay, so.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Vaughn?
All right, I made a mistake. I walked in here, and I had all eyes looking at me, I was in the back, and I'm not sure what I voted for. So is there any way that I can look at it and change my vote if possible, or stay the same?
Speak to Rebecca, though.
Rebecca?
Okay, she, we can reconsider it, unless, but she wants time, that's the thing.
I just want to hear what the motion, what it was, because I don't want to vote for something that's going to affect those landscapers, that is the reason we were here today, that's why this was so important. And they are, some of them are about to go under.
Right.
And if that's the case, I want to change my vote. Can I change my vote?
You can change your vote. What you, hold on a second, guys, I'm sorry.
Peter, you're boss.
No, not you, I know, Peter and, I'm sorry, it's just too many conversations.
Sorry about that.
I apologize, but I don't apologize.
I know, yeah, very good.
Nothing is in stone, because we can go back and change.
All right, so what we voted, what just failed, was moving forward the plan as presented.
Okay, but we can change the plan as we go, for the next reading, correct?
Yes.
Well, there won't be, there's only one more council meeting.
No, 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 Peter, this is, if we, hold on.
Oh, you did?
If we, hang on, please, if we, if this vote passes today, we have two weeks before the second reading. In that interim time, we are able to speak with Drew and talk about, what's that? We can make changes to it, but then we have two full weeks.
Right.
And so the concern...
I mean, for all of us, that's a no-brainer, I'm sorry, if we can go back and change, we're just approving now to move forward, so we can help the landscapers, and then we can come back and we can change or add, take away. So if y'all will let me, I'd like to change my vote.
Okay. So at this point, we're going to have to do a motion to reconsider.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Well, you weren't on the prevailing side. Yeah, that's right. Carolyn, can you make a motion to reconsider, please?
I make the motion to reconsider.
Okay, okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, the motion carries.
All right, so now we can vote on it again, and I can use the machine this time.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval, again. With the amendment?
With the amendment.
With the amendment.
Yes, as amended, and you can, yes, to...
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Oh, wait, I've got this too, Mayor, sir.
Any opposed, what?
You can use the voting thing if you want.
Okay.
Oh, and we didn't ask for public comment, I don't know, somebody wanted to talk.
Okay, well, we're going to go back to that. Okay. You're right, we did not.
Yeah, we haven't asked for public comment yet.
He didn't vote, I know. We're going to open public comment, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number 29? Public comment? Going once? Hurry up, Bob, hurry up, Bob.
All right. All right, Bob Paulson, Executive Director of the Coastal Bend Industry Association, Corpus Christi resident in District Four. You know, we have two weeks to consider changes to this, and it's going to need some changes. In general, the association is in favor of a new drought contingency plan, and is happy with the approach the city's taken, although I don't think that a lot of the public, and even the industry engagement, has been as long as you might think, right? So I mean, you know, we have been engaged at several points in the past, but this new version, which is quite different from the one we saw in the fall, is a new arrival. And so, you know, we're doing our best to read through it like everybody else is, we've read through it once, and again, I think it's a good plan, it's a huge step forward, that's not to say that there aren't questions about certain phrases. And a point that was made earlier today that, about the surcharges and their impact on sort of undercutting the incentive to participate in a drought surcharge exemption fee, is something that we agree with, that that, I think, was probably an unintentional consequence, so that's something that needs to be looked at. Because there was a reason in 2018 that the, the surcharges that were for non-exempt large-volume users were really cranked up, and it was to make it so that, you know, not participating would be very painful in the event of a drought where there was surcharge in allocations. As was pointed out earlier today, that that goes away with this new approach, which is, I think, you know, good idea to try to streamline it and make it consistent, but I think, you know, right now as it stands, doesn't really take into account that other impact. So we need to work those things out, and, you know, obviously, like I said, right now we're bound with two weeks, you know, we'll do, we'll do the best we can, but I think that's probably the most important point to make, is that this is a significantly different plan, and it's going to take some time to kind of read through exactly how it changed. They were not, they were not kidding about going out to other places and asking them how they manage their drought contingency operations, and it's resulted in a better plan, I think, overall, but one that we're going to, you know, we'll do what we need to do to get it done in the time allotted, but it needs to be parsed through to make sure that it works as intended.
Bob, who parses through that, when you say that? Who are you referring to specifically?
Well...
The organization?
Well, for me, well, for my group, there's two levels, I mean, there's me, I'm going to parse through it all, and then each of the individual large-volume users, you know, were like, let's download the plans, and they're reading them at their company level. So some are getting shot out to lawyers, some are being...
Respectfully, I cannot imagine that an industry who has an army of lawyers and an army of administrative people couldn't look at this, you've had a council that looks at it in a week's time, that they couldn't focus on, you know, assigning three lawyers and saying, hey, flip through that and figure it out quickly, I would imagine...
Sure, we can do it, it can be done in two weeks. It can be done in two, it can be done in two weeks. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that the characterization that this has been out there for a while for people to read in its current form is inaccurate.
And I don't, I don't believe, who said that?
Well, right before I came up, Mayor, I sprung out of my, I sprung out of my seat when the comment was made, that staff has been working with industry on this. They have been working with industry, and we saw the new plan yesterday, actually, we downloaded it... Actually, we downloaded it Friday when we saw that it was on this agenda. This version is different from the one from the fall. That's great in many respects, but it is different and it needs, you know, we need to review it. Everybody needs to read through it. And especially the surcharge part, because I think there's an error.
I understand, I think that's exactly what the irrigation people did. And they took care of business. So I, I mean, I hear you, I hear you and you're making public comment and you're right. I think that all the industry.
I just wanted to clarify that one point and make the point about the surcharges.
Right.
We will do what needs to be done.
Sure.
To make sure that our input is made in time for the second reading. I just wanted to clarify a few things, that's it. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming up, anyone else?
Good evening, Council, my name is Trey Summers, I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Hogan Homes and I'm a resident of District Two. I just want to come up here and say that, you know, all in all, I think, you know, us is, you know, personally in my business, we're all for water conservation. I think there's great things, some great additions to the plans, look forward to working with Drew and his team. One thing that has concerned me since day one with the original drought contingency plan coming into the new plan is the limiting of water meters. And the reason being is that, yes, it's an optional measure, yes, it's can be, it has to be approved by council. However, what I'm seeing in other municipalities that we build in, we don't just build in Corpus, we build in Rockport, Aransas Pass, Port Aransas, they're all adopting these same drought contingency plans. And therefore, if this limiting of water meters stays in this plan, then these municipalities could then take this as a way to weaponize growth and new construction. So I just caution y'all to think about the broader terms of all the CCW water customers and how these plans could potentially affect our surrounding areas. So it's something that, you know, state law has moratorium legislation on. So, you know, it's a way to enact it outside of the plan, but having it inside of the drought contingency plan really kind of gives an extra layer of ammo for cities that want to punish any sort of growth or new construction, residentially or commercially. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Summers, anyone else? Okay, we're going to close public comment. Councilwoman Paxton. Oh, you, go ahead, hang on, that's okay.